Project is scheduled to occur in our calendar year of two thousand and sixteen. The total costs, the rescue cost comes to four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, ODOT's contribution is capped at three hundred and twenty-three thousand, so our match is going to be a hundred and six thousand. Which we intend or intend to apply for OPWC funding for the entire amount, so. Also.
Maybe you did not apply for OPWC this year, correct?
No, we didn't.
Had we the year before?
Last year we got it for, I think the uh.
Oh, well.
Franklin. Franklin Avenue.
With the water line, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that, the paving project is actually then planned on site with ODOT when they pave, take out seventy, so hopefully that'll help get better pricing.
So, ODOT handles the bids and all that on that?
On the paving for.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, next item is just uh, gratifying support. We just need the, the council approval, head forward to uh, county audit report.
Why are you giving this to Dale?
Oh, what is that?
You're gonna read it, please, that'll, that'll be on, under petition communications tonight, that'll be one of the things.
Yeah.
We'll read, there's also one for delinquent utility council sound.
Oh, okay.
Anything, so, it's on for the night. I guess you just have to, I guess your committee just make sure you forward it on to tonight, which is kind of an ideal, but as.
But you gotta act on that.
Right.
On the floor.
On the floor, yeah. Just send it out there.
We'll talk about it.
I would give that to Lynn. She's the one. Yeah, it's actually, we've already got it. I mean, it's in her packet.
Oh, you're getting it.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
Next item, uh, couple guy raised it, wrapped up all the, sort of wrapping up all the paperwork on that project, and there were change orders that amounted to four thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and forty-three cents. It's just request to appropriate that money to refund.
Are we done on that project that you now?
A book though?
Yeah.
This year, uh, we received a statement came money two days before shooting of Irvingwood Drive west between the, the tracks and former drive. That is planned to start um, sixty this month, so just as a heads up.
Community development block grant.
Yeah.
Will they be closing that portion of the road part?
Yeah, they'll be, they'll be closing down and leave from the west side of Keller. Keller will be an actual.
Are they paving between Keller and the railroad tracks?
Yeah.
So they can do the one part first, they're gonna do the one part first and then between Keller and the tracks, or how are they gonna do that?
I think they're gonna do like, do it all, but they're just gonna maintain traffic flow between Keller and the tracks.
Okay.
So when they do one side, they'll probably keep it inside, so I'm assuming, I'm not sure how they actually plan it, but.
They cable, they cable it.
It's like you got a little sign.
At former drive, Culver, that's actually, should be open tomorrow sometime. It might even be open right now, they only have to do some striking, so.
And that would be right on schedule.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, I guess so.
Right on time.
Yeah, pretty much.
To how many vehicles John and I had, uh, the property owner up on Irvingwood East, uh, just used to, uh, rebuyers takes, he has each of the vehicles that he was given, I think, three months to try and get rid of. Uh, we tried helping him out, contacting different organizations to help get rid of them. He would never comply with this, so last week we went out there and had changed, had two clients. Now, there's a, potentially another issue that we'll have to deal with. We actually forwarded it to Dave Morrison already, but it's at the corner of Briarville, I think, through the instral. Streets eleven ninety-eight Briarville, where uh, just had a bunch of junk in the yard. They haven't cleaned it up, I think they had two months to do it, so potentially something coming up. If you hear any complaints.
Where?
Second rebuyer.
Oh, it's a.
Phil, it goes up. Jan uh, Woken, his holiday decorations, Jan Woken has a group that is wanting to put on an event for Halloween. It's called Children's Boo Nights and Stoop Truck Killer Halloween. It's going to be here at City Hall. Uh, they plan on having that event here where they have a bunch of trucks, uh, for kids to look at, and they're supposed to decorate City Hall for the event and for the holiday, and then uh, they're supposed to decorate City Hall again at Christmas time, and I think it's gonna be the bridge over here on seventy-nine, I'm not sure. I'm pretty sure that's in the works, and so.
So. You know, while we're talking about that, I think James would love that, but that entrance into the city here on seventy-nine, with that so peace sign there, brick, that the canal area, that is beautiful, yeah, who does that?
So the Lions Club does that, the, the canal park areas I was talking about, I think that's the Heath Lions Club that does that.
Well, it does look nice.
Our October Utilities Committee meeting will be held back in the conference room, back the hall, because they're gonna be having decorations and stuff up here for the.
Next item is digital signs.
Today's night is the thirty-first.
About a year ago, Federal Highway put out a notice after doing a, a study on digital signs and their effects on traffic. They put out a study and they basically made the recommendation that digital signs weren't safe, and then they came back after that and basically said that the data they used or their method in their study was flawed, so they didn't have a determination based on that study. At that time, we had tried to identify whether or not we wanted to allow digital signs in the city or not. But we kind of put it on hold and VZBA has been not allowing signs to continue to be put up based on the fact that we were waiting for Federal Highway to come back and make a final determination on their study. Well, they've never done that, and VZBA is stuck in limbo pretty much. People requesting these signs are becoming more and more as time goes on. So we want to try and establish whether or not we want to allow these signs or disallow them. One of the methods we were gonna do to try and get feedback from the public was to put a survey either on our website or in our utilities billing. Try and people in community to give us.
Were you talking about the big signs, what I hear about?
No, not bill.
No, like what Walgreens has or Garfield Elementary or something.
So if the council feels that you might want to consider them, we might go about doing, putting a survey together, putting it out there. Or if you guys just flat out don't want them, period, then we just need a direction or really teach the beginning of the data.
Right now, do we have it where you just do words? Is that what it is? But not video and all that stuff, time capture?
I guess there won't be no animation.
Right, but, but if you go, are you talking about having the full? Wait, 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 hold, hold, hold on just one second. Our current ordinance, does it allow or not allow digital signs?
It does, but it has to be timed.
Okay, okay, that's, okay, alright, I just wondered, okay.
We want to know, we want to start allowing.
But other places, so they're more in time temperature, like Walgreens says, you know, photo making set, photos or whatever, or something like that. Garfield says. There have been a number of properties where they have received from VZBA, uh, a variance.
That's what we want.
And allowed them to, to do that.
Do we allow them and then when they will be to their process?
Well, I guess when you say allow digital, there's digital where you have the words and stuff, then there's digils that looks like a TV screen, you know, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, where they can, I mean, have all kinds of motion and movement and all that kind of stuff, and that's, that's where I think the slippery slope or whatever, but you get in, you allow this and you allow that, and all of a sudden they're, it's like a full TV, I think, you put anything up, where they can show the highest game out there while you're driving down the, you know. Which is exactly why it would be a benefit to VZBA to have this body say again.
Yep.
Here's what we will allow, here's what we won't allow, of the things that we'll allow, these are the stipulations. I, I, I think that having uh, the will of the council made clear again on this issue would help VZBA.
Wouldn't it be good then for John and Eddie to come back to us with their recommendation? Maybe they allow the digital signs, but only time temperature, maybe, you know, like Walgreens where it says, you know, aspirin ninety-nine cents or what have you, prescriptions for you, I.
Well, you know, we, a- as Eddie said, a part of the thinking would be to solicit input from, you know, the citizens, and, and we have a couple of, you know, I think probably be pretty effective means of, of soliciting that. Now, whether or not we get back or not, of course, is out of our control, but.
So if you guys are, if you guys are open to changing it, then we're speaking, go ahead, put it out, put it together.
Yeah. So that, so that council can maybe then just consider feedback from people, but obviously, uh, your feedback as city council members is pretty important too. What, I mean. How to word this? I don't mind digital signs, I mean, like the gas station, they were able to change their gas prices to, you know, milk change price that or whatever. I have no problem with words, you know, prices, that kind of stuff. So a digital sign that just changes the words, a message, whatever, I mean, I think that's everywhere, that, I think that's a foregone conclusion, rather than someone going out there with numbers and letters and having to change them all the time. You know, that's the thing of the past, you know, so just allowing digital signs to do that, I think is a no-brainer. As far as allowing the digital sign then to go the next step where you can show animation, like I said, I think that would be more distracting, driving down the street, driving down the street and just seeing all the price, you're kind of used to reading letters, it's like that, but of all a sudden it looks like, you know, what's that picture or whatever, you know, or, or you stop at the traffic light and it's like, I'm gonna wait here, I might wanna go on green 'cause I wanna see what the next animation is before you, you go down the street, you know, so, I mean, as far as having to do a survey and anything, I'd find the change in the thing to say digital signs are okay as long as it's
I don't think.
Words and numbers and stuff like that, not animation, you know.
I agree.
But you can do a survey if you want, you ask, I mean, to me, I mean. Well, that's, that's what we're asking you guys, we're asking you guys, what, what would you like to do on this? I mean, of course, the next step will be, after we allow all that, the next step, people will be, why can't we do, well, fancy or animations, you know. But here's where, you know, we, we, this has evolved from time temperature.
Right.
To, okay, words, but they have to just come up and then disappear and have new words come up, not, they can't like move, can't have that kind of stuff. Then you see some of that, then you see, you know, the digital signs on the, on the standard monument sized signs, then you see some that aren't. I mean, this is where, you know, a- a- again, from the VZBA's standpoint, the genie is out of the bottle. And so new direction from council on what is allowed and what is not allowed, whatever those are.
Yeah.
That will help VZBA say, when the next one comes and says, oh, we want fireworks to come out of our digital sign, we can say, no. VZBA can say, no, council, you know, last year passed an ordinance that said, this is what we allow, unless you can so, show some hardship as to why you need fireworks coming out of your digital sign, the answer is gonna be no.
The other, the other thing would be the size, the physical size of the sign.
Yep.
Hi, Durham, hi, Durham, please welcome to me, I just was gonna say exactly what Tim said, I think that, you know, I don't think other words are any more distracting than time and temperature, and I think that rather than have variances for some organizations to be able to do it and then not allow others, I think we should be consistent, and I I don't think that's the simplest way to move forward.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
I agree, I'm, I'm agreeing with Tim and, and also I, you know, agree with, we, we've got to put the genie back in the bottle. I mean, that's, that's as far as I'm concerned, I think that we've got to put a cap on it to work. It's gonna really have to be something before they go to the zoning commission to get it changed. I think that once we should pass the, an ordinance, let's, let's put some teeth in it. Let's say, hey, you know, that's. I got two questions.
Okay.
One, what does the current ordinance say? And two, how to get out of the bottle?
VZBA. The current two allows, uh, time and temperature, no animation or, I mean, coffee or anything like that. Doesn't allow mechanical changeable coffee side or anything like that. I just, I think also the digital signs, but uh, the VZBA is basically granting variances to allow certain types of signage, or, well, digital signs, but I think people kind of question what's there and there, once they get in there, but that's what we're trying to.
Variances get us in trouble.
Yeah, well, that's why we're trying to get a direction from the council, so don't stop.
There was one before, wasn't there?
Apparently. But you know, I, what Dick was, or uh, Tim was saying, I sat here at Irvingwick, waiting for the light. And just recently, it was almost dusty dark. This guy was coming down, I noticed him watching the light, and it changed, went to yellow. And he got about halfway through, and that big sign up there has a big flash or something, it come on, and he slammed on his brakes and backed up, 'cause I think he was going back to the cameras. It was that bright. So, you know, what you're saying is true, if you've got flash in and fireworks, people watch that stuff.
There are kind of two reasons that you have signs, and when we did the sign ordinance fifteen years ago, probably, does that sound right, Tim?
Yeah.
There, there, there's, there's two primary functions for a sign. One is to locate a business and wants to advertise products. And it, it, that was the issue that we wrestled with the most back when we did the sign ordinance is, we really don't mind having signage that will locate a business, but we, where we were kind of uncomfortable is when the signage out front of this establishment was gonna advertise that tacos are seventy-nine cents. That would really rather it say Taco Bell, and that that be the signage, and that they advertise in some other way than putting signs all over the place. I suspect these banners that are now real popular, that, 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 I suspect those are against our sign ordinance.
I think where we're at, if we should take these guys, that dance out of the street, and has ever been, pull them out, I, I hate that, you don't know where you're going around, driving around. They had a hit after the day, I don't know what the mayor was, but, oh, it's almost vulgar.
To, to, to Dick's point earlier, um, ob- now, obviously, there is an ordinance on the books that speaks to this issue. Um, and it is within the authority of the VZBA to grant variances to that ordinance. And, you know, the VZBA is made up of citizens who volunteer their time on that body, so nobody's cutting on them. And, 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 you know, the job done in the past, but, um, yeah, w- w- we now have a number of, uh, properties that have electronic signs that don't, and for one reason or another, variances were granted and they don't adhere to what the ordinance says. Now, it, it, it's probably pretty hard to turn that spigot off unless this body says, here's, you know, here, here's what the spigot is now, again, you know?
Problem is, that was becoming more and more common, so when you grant one variance every year, it's different when like people start coming in and asking what everyone, you know, you're basically rewriting the ordinance instead of pressing, you start following it. That's not their position to do that, so.
Well, um, I don't think it's something that could be hammered out right here at this table either, I think we're gonna do it, we should do it right, you know, last time we formed a committee, right? We made such a committee that went through it, I mean, I know we're not trying to reinvent the last.
Last time the mayor's task force tackled us, and it was a year, it was a year-long event.
I, I don't see you have to reinvent, reinvent the whole thing, but there's, I mean, if you see it at the table and say, yeah, it could be done, I think we should put more thought and a little more effort into just, than just saying.
Well, this is just whether or not we want to.
Yeah.
Go about allowing or not, but we'll actually.
What I was gonna say is, whatever we decide, we had to decide whether it's enforceable or not, because, you know, you granted variances for digital signs or digital signs, and I know I've driven the street out here, and I know some have shown stuff that they, you know, they animate, you know, different things on there that aren't supposed to, or flashing, or, or this time or anything, but how do we enforce, you know, let's say you go by there and it is doing something wrong, I mean, you, does John or Eddie knock on the door, go in and say, hey, your sign's wrong, and what if they say, so what, you know, I mean, what's the, you know, there's gotta be some teeth to it, if they're wrong, you know? Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could be guilty of a minor misdemeanor, but you gotta make sure it's worth the effort to go trick, you know, that it doesn't just change it and stuff like that.
Spell out what the fine amount would be, Keith.
You know.
And something like, can you even spell out what the fine amount would be?
I think it's spelled out, and it's up to the judge if they are found guilty of a minor misdemeanor of the third degree or parameters of what that would be.
Of what that would be. I'm just saying that, you know, 'cause if all of a sudden we say, yeah, we allow digital signs, which I think we should say digital signs, the next thing we gotta say is, they can't be over a certain size or a certain illumination or something like that, just because otherwise people will push it, you know? They'll, they'll put ten small little signs together that'll animation make one big size. Yes, the thing, you can define this however you want to be, you can say they have to be, you know, X feet by Y. You can say that they can only be, um, you know, one color as far as the, 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 the light, you know, of the, of the letters on a black backdrop. You can say that. You could say, I would presume, that you can't put a digital sign on an otherwise non-conforming sign. You could say, I, I would think you could say, ABC Business that has this old non-conforming sign in the city, if you wanna have a digital thing to that, you gotta bring that thing down and go to the conforming sign. I, I, I think you could say that, so. Well, this is, I, I guess what I was, went to piggyback on what Brian said was, let John and Eddie, since they're gonna have to be the ones that enforce it, kind of write the rules or some of the record date, 'cause they probably know what size sign those people go with, and say, and come back and say, and we would like to amend this, the sign ordinance to read, da-da-da-da-da, you know, and then. And one, one of them, if not both of them, are in the VZBA meetings where these past variances have been granted, so they seem that. Yeah, so they know what we need to, to change, just have them mark up the current one, to change, you know, black out the words you need, add in the new tags you need, bring it to the, I mean, we don't have to ride away, break the next month's committee meeting, and we can all look at it then and see if it's, you know, or if you get it ahead of time, email it out to everyone ahead of time, and we can look it over.
And I see it before the meeting.
Right, yeah, so, yeah, I mean.
I think they're doing this job, because, you know, the camel was made by a committee.
You also don't need to reinvent this wheel because, because honestly, I think what you ought to basically do, and I thought I didn't get my way again fifteen years ago, we didn't, we didn't have any teeth in, in, in our sign ordinance, and there was no point in time where conformity was gonna be required. So really, if you look at State Route seventy-nine and the signage today, it's not much different than what it was fifteen years ago. It's, it's still my sign's bigger than your sign covering that sign, and now we've got those banners right there across the street that are blowing in the wind. And, uh, I think what you, if you, if you are gonna have a sign ordinance, what you, what you ought to do is, uh, go someplace that you like the looks of their city, and probably just ask for a copy of their sign ordinance, and then have some kind of forced compliance at some point in time in the future, some reasonable point in time in the future.
I don't know.
Ten years, twenty years, whatever.
I think I've asked that question before, and the response that I've gotten is, is that you can't force compliance on something like that that's already.
We believe we could, we believe we could, when we looked into this fifteen years ago, but the, the argument was, and John made the argument that he didn't wanna do that, he made an argument that, uh, you know, one, one of the things we looked into was the period of time that a business gets to write off the cost of a new sign, and they're, so for tax purposes. And I, it seems to me that they get to write off the cost of a new sign for ten years, but that's why I was pushing for ten-year compliance, and you gotta keep in mind, that's ten years for a sign that goes up the day you install your sign ordinance. All those pre-existing signs would have a longer period than ten years, so, but, you know, it, it's, uh,
well, drive down Thirty and Street in Newark, right there at the railroad track, which is, I think it's a little area, and they've got, I think, two of those signs that do everything, including setting off fireworks. And the only time I ever paid attention, though, I realized that I'm not, might not be Mr. Average, and if I go into that ice cream store, and I'm sitting there, I read it. Other than that, I'm totally oblivious to it. Because I'm trying to get across those railroad tracks.
Are you talking, Nick, about the big digital billboard?
Yeah.
Over top of the old.
Yeah. Like what we have right over here at, at Irvingwick?
Yeah.
One of the big digital billboards?
Yeah.
That's a smaller digital sign.
Make sure we're.
I do like the mayor's idea about if you want, if we do a lot of digital signs, can you have a non-conforming sign? You must put up a non-conforming sign first, 'cause that'll accomplish what you guys were trying to do, will help, if you only want that digital sign, it's gonna bring some of the big commerce, commerce and signs down, 'cause they're gonna want the digital, I mean, I think that's gonna be, of course, they go to VZBA to get a variance, if they give it to them, still at that point.
Why write a rule if they're gonna issue variance?
Well, but it might, it might help bring some of those down, I think that's, I think that's a most.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
At the same time, you're right, Nick, you can add the thing about these banners flying in the wind if you really wanted to, I, because the council works.
The only time they bother me is when they break loose and come flying across the road.
So you guys are in favor of changing? So you guys are in favor of changing this?
John need to put the wording in it, bring it back, or give it to us in the mail and let us look at it?
Some of the comments that you could have been for tonight. We got in a car and drove around and looked at different areas. Reynoldsford had a new, had a, had a sign ordinance extremely restricted, we went there. Drove around and looked at what it looked like. Honestly, some of, some areas like that, it's hard to find in McDonald's, and, you know? So maybe you don't want the very most restrictive thing that, that's out there, and.
I didn't realize that there was a McDonald's in New Albany off of one sixty-one, that as you're heading toward two seventy, it would be off on the right. I didn't realize it was even there, and so I happened to be going to a different restaurant in that area. I was like, oh gosh, that's a McDonald's, but it was, you know, brownish, tannish, red, didn't have any of that red color that you associate with McDonald's and all that, until you were on top of it, I didn't even realize it was a McDonald's.
That's the way it is in Mount, Mount Bergen, how they do it. And as you see the sign, you, you wouldn't recognize it.
But you get used, you people that live there get used to that, and.
You don't have any trouble finding a hamburger.
Yeah, right.
So you agree with that, committee, Tim, anybody disagree with what we said?
Let's see, let's see, bring something back?
Bring somebody.
The next, uh, final item, uh, the City Department's request to appropriate money to purchase a, then, red dump truck, the City Department.
Eighty dollars was in the airport improvement fund to purchase a dump body for a street dump truck.
How much?
Eighty dollars.
This is for the, the truck, and we, I know Bob's described this before, but this is the one where the trucks are on a mine, it's just that the bed is shot.
Yeah.
So, and we can't transfer the bed from the truck that's shot.
Yeah, that's right, we cannot do that.
From the beautiful winter.
That's correct. That's why it's coming tonight. I, Brian, I would think that that ordinance, was there more on, so we can give the council agenda and the council.
We can talk to Bob, but the council may wanna consider way more massive than the team getting it installed.
I wanted to sell them around.
Is that it?
Oh, I got a, I got a question. Sorry I was late. That question on this grass cutting at sixty-six, I don't know, Brian?
Any idea of whether the bank is taking that over yet, and it still looks.
Yeah, I think that people moved out.
Oh, yeah.
And when did you say whether or not the bank?
Sorry, I got from the neighbors, he went to the nursing home, his daughter moved back to the office, and the bank is taking it over, so. We went in and bowed, the backyard was extremely tall. I don't know about that part, but I didn't make a complaint, we'll answer the question. But, um, still looks like crap. And I didn't know whether we just knocked down to a certain point, if we can contact the bank, whoever it is, or whoever's in charge, and either do it right, or we win and we do it again.
Yeah, once we find out who the bank is, who actually has control of the property, we can try and work with them to get it taken care of. I was under the understanding that Dan, Dan, I'm sure he's one of the, he's the one that does the cutting for us. He said that there was barbed wire all over the backyard, so he wasn't able to knock it down.
The place is still a mess, there's.
So that's why there may still be tall grass here and there, patches.
Crap in the driveway. I can't believe the neighbors, what did this one do to play?
Also, with the county now, Eddie, the bank's officially taken over? More closure proceedings?
Also, one of the neighbor folk, I don't know who it was, this one or not, but he said they had parked a white utility truck on the, if you go down, it's on the left side, but, it's been there, they said it'd been there for over a month.
Where?
On the clear, I posted it, so, so the, I tell it would come back up. I drove down there a couple times and I saw it, I thought it was a utility, but, yeah, I told me last week it was still stuck there. It's a white, it's a white utility, you know, it looks like one of these hall, lawnmower equipment, yeah, and all that stuff.
Anything over twenty feet can be up down.
But you, it's been there that long, the place was supposed to be marked and bound it over twenty-four hours, same work.
Anything else come up on this committee?
I got a question, two questions, and one may not be for the committee, but what in the world is that thing you built over here in the park, uh, two months ago?
Oh, down the street?
Yes.
With the water in it? I'm not real sure, but it's kinda weird.
Did you let them know that somebody built something over there?
Yeah, that.
They seem to be the healthcare people or something.
A waterfall feature has kind of a, you know, a tricky business. He actually got a lease on someone else's land, and.
That's not our land?
We're, we're. A big rock feature that kinda looks like a slide.
Yeah, quite down here, I, I thought it was part of the entrance to the city, to the city property, but it's not.
It's not a big.
You can't, well, no, you can, but. No, I don't know what you're talking about. Well, I think the truck went down through there, it's, uh.
Okay, so, so where's that in relation to the box run?
It's actually down right down here, I'm at the turn right, it's on the left-hand side.
Before you get the box run?
Close to the town park.
It's the welcome to the city?
Yeah.
It's close to the town park.
It's this side of the welcome city sign.
Okay.
Yeah, it sits back in there, and it, okay, probably twelve foot tall, anyways.
I think I saw it, but I, I just seen it out of peripheral vision, and I was afraid to look, because I had cars in front of me.
I don't know, I didn't realize it was on private property.
They built a waterfall?
It, it's weird, yeah, you need to go see it.
It's like a slide, but it has a bunch of.
It's weird.
Ranchings around it, and you can't pump water up, it's a cascade job.
It's attached to our property, our property, the city property where the entrance to the city, the town park, that's, that's attached to that property, isn't it? Because it looks like it's part of the same piece of ground.
Oh.
You're coming into cities, you're from right inside past the entrance. Anyway, that was one.
Rapids.
One more thing, too, about the, I don't know if it's, I can bring it up in this committee, but the emergency system and.
Yeah.
I signed up, I signed up for that, and I had to go back and double check, but I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure that I checked. Text only, may have texted on the phone call, which is fine, but I didn't know if you had anybody else let you know that, or didn't.
No. Uh, if you recall your, if you, if you recall the, you know, your login information, you can go on the website.
I'll double check it, but I know I did text you only, but it was, uh, oh, I better, before I say that, I better double check, but there was a test on Thursday. If you signed it before Thursday, there was a test.
As a matter of fact, I got a weather alert yesterday.
Did you? I didn't get the weather alert.
I didn't need it.
I was going to, but I thought I was automatically.
I don't know, one day, I'm trying to think what day I signed up.
I didn't get a weather alert, but it's right here, Thursday, October third at eleven AM, this is a test in the city emergency notification system. That's the only text I, I got, so if there was a weather alert, I didn't get that.
How I would know when, what day I signed up?
Yeah, let me see, I think I deleted it.
Because I did it from the house, I did it from the cell phone, I did all kinds of stuff, so I should've got it from different places. Unless I did, what, what time on Thursday was that sent? Maybe I did it at Thursday, eleven AM? Oh, maybe I did it later.
Eleven AM is.
How would I know when I committed?
It shows up with just the number two-three-one-seven-seven, and there's no.
I think I deleted it.
Yeah, because I showed it, oh, that's great.
I know we got, in today's mail, we got, oh geez, I don't know, ten, twelve? Something like that, mail, you know? Uh, people can fill them out, fill papers out, mail them to us, we'll kinda get them signed in the system or whatever. We got ten or twelve, um, talked to somebody who had a question about registering for it, so. Um, it'll take some time, I think word of mouth will help a lot too, as far as citizens getting signed up for it. Maybe I did it Friday.
I said, oh, everybody else, I hate.
You go, Eddie. Oh, all right, do you wanna, do you wanna copy of the proclamation that, today is the fiftieth anniversary of our police department? So we're gonna, I'm gonna have a proclamation and all that, you want me to send you a copy of that? Okay. You only sent it to you, or you only sent it to Dan?
All right, just send that to me.
Okay, all right, I'll do that. Are you leaving for something more interesting?
Yeah, save it for.
That's the church here.
All right, we're gonna call finances to order at six twelve. We've got three legislative requests on our agenda. The first is to authorize the disposal of eight mobile data computers, one two thousand three Chevrolet Avalanche pickup truck, and one two thousand four Ford Crown Victoria sedan of the police department, and to, um, transfer those proceeds to the law enforcement trust fund. Um, do anybody have any questions or discussion on that?
One quick question, on the computers, is there any, like, information still in the hard, is there hard drives in them, anything still on there that, I mean, needs to be, like, taken out, wiped out, or?
Mister Lieutenant Mason's gonna be doing the disposal, I'm sure he'll be.
Okay.
I'm gonna do it.
That's a good question, though, well, we need to verify that that happens, like, to take the guts out, so. Oh, okay, okay. I just know nowadays that. Oh, okay, okay.
During the meeting, I thought that's what she did.
Okay, I thought, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, he said something about ruining the hard drive, take care of it, okay. I had a target practice or something, I thought, was what was. I mean, you're gonna sell the pieces apart, so I assume they're gonna try to sell them somewhere by the.
John Mason's gonna be doing the, uh, perhaps maybe even writing the eBay ad. He, he, I think is intending to sell these in maybe groupings of four, or maybe all of them at one place, thinking that another department would, might want those for, uh, parts. But, but, is, I'm gonna lean on his judgment on this, because I don't really know. He's kind of a computer pop plus, he's familiar with the police utility.
Yeah, but, I thought we're using that avalanche truck, it's still on patrol. Is that the one that's all, got the city information on it?
No.
I think it's something different, because we do have a truck that's.
We have a pickup that's, yeah.
Okay. It's not that. It's a charging truck, I guess, is.
This is a different vehicle.
This is a different vehicle.
Okay, they'd also like to have us wait the second reading on that question, so we can move forward and get these option off. Um, Cletus, you okay with that? Okay, second legislative request is a change order for the Hopewell Bridge project, authorizing four thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars and forty-three cents from within capital improvement to reimburse ODOT for change orders on the Hopewell Drive project. We discussed that in zoning, any further questions or discussion? Third one is, your, Jen just says buy a dump truck, but as we said earlier, it's buy a dump truck bed, um, and that's to authorize eight thousand dollars from within the capital improvement fund to purchase the dump truck body for the street department. Any further questions or discussion on that? Cletus?
Okay.
Okay?
We're buying the bed or the truck?
The bed.
Yeah, the bed.
The bed. And other, other items, we have CPA test for Beth Shepherd, and I'm assuming he's gonna talk us about that.
Yeah, um, Beth has indicated that her associate's degree in accounting, that she may have all of the requirements necessary to sit for a CPA exam.
Absolutely.
That surprises me too, and, uh, if me even having this on the agenda is maybe a bit premature. But, uh, she came in my office today and, uh, asked if she would set for that exam as eligible to, would the city consider reimbursing her the costs associated with that if she passes? And, uh, I of course don't know the answer to that.
Only if she passes.
What are you talking about? About nine hundred bucks? I think that would depend if it's a very part of her job, if we, we, I mean, that's my opinion, I don't, I'd rather have someone else.
My, my first thought too was, I've talked to people who have bachelor's degrees and are working as accountants, and I'm a little fearful of that, because it's a very difficult exam, and the cost being a little prohibitive, and you're not really prepared, she might, I, I don't know. She's gonna pay it anyway.
Well, I don't think, as she said, I don't think Beth would be asking us to front the money.
Right, it says she passes.
Yeah, but I, I, I raised, uh, some more points to what Cletus, to what you think, maybe that idea, how much you're talking?
About nine hundred?
About nine hundred dollars.
I thought it was more.
I did too.
I thought it was more like fifteen hundred. I'll see if I can. I'm on the flower, I mean, that kept people alive.
I, I'd say if it's not, I mean, if we don't need her to be a CPA to do the job, I don't see as why we would pay for her to get it, because if she gets it, then it just makes her more marketable to go somewhere else for more money and everything. I mean, you're kinda paying someone, you know, it'd be like, if we said we'd pay for a CDL license for anyone, one of their CDL licenses, and so everyone's sitting in CDL, but we don't need people that have CDL license, you know? You're just spending taxpayer money to get something that, it doesn't, it won't make them any better doing the job if she has it or doesn't have it, in this case.
I think when we approve that, paying for license for the sewer water people, it's paid off like they say. I, I support those, but I just don't think, I'm like, I didn't say it, it'd make her more marketable, you know, she gets a CPA.
To go to someplace. I got, um, if you're interested. I, I pulled up the state's countancy board website, and I have a list of the academic requirements for admissions of CPA examination. They are a hundred and fifty semester college credits, or two hundred and twenty-five quarter college credits. I wonder, are there any state, are there any colleges in Ohio still on quarters, now that hot state, no U S?
Well, but people are already graduating, they're.
They're already graduated, yeah. It's all most people. Uh, thirty semester college credits, forty-five quarter college, and accounting courses, or twenty-four semester college credits, thirty-six quarter college credits, and accounting courses above the introductory level. Accounting courses typically cover the areas of financial accounting, cost slash managerial accounting, CPA auditing, and taxation. Twenty-four semester college credits in business courses. Business courses acceptable to finance management, economics, and marketing, as well as business courses designed by such a college or university, like business law, business communications, those kind of things. Uh, a candidate who has met the accounting and business course requirements, but not the one hundred and fifty semester credits, may take the CPA examination if the candidate achieves a score of six twenty on the GMAT. Graduate test, standardized test. Uh, costs, which I'm not sure I understand this. First time applicant, the application fees for the CPA examination are as follows. First time application fee, a hundred and forty dollars, reexamination application fee, four sections, a hundred and thirty dollars. Reexamination application fee, three sections, a hundred and ten dollars, and goes so on and so forth down to one.
I've said there was a hundred. I've said there was a hundred and forty dollars upfront, and then there were five sections.
Okay.
That would, that would have individual fees that all add up totally between eight and nine, eight and nine hundred.
Okay. So, that's some of the information as far as your qualifications, being able to take the test.
Okay, well, I think that's, as you said.
Yeah, there was pure, purely informational, uh. I would think it would be kinda neat someday if you had a tax commissioner that had a CPA. Not bad. Not bad, so.
Okay, anything else for finance?
I had something, I can't remember, what was it?
You want us to wait?
Wait, let me take care of it. We're talking about. If I think about, in caucus, I'll talk about it if I can remember. There was something I was.
Okay, well, we will adjourn at six twenty-one.
While we're, uh, just sitting here, uh, most of you know, I received a phone call and, and emails and stuff from Jeff Crable, that he was going to resign because of his, his going to Florida. And then on Thursday, he called me back again, and his job, he just got him out of the meeting, and his job changed down there, and now he sent me another email that he should be back. He said, December first on the phone, he thought he'd be back before Thanksgiving, but he, in his email, he said he'd, I'd be back around December first and stuff. So, he doesn't wanna resign, so he told me not to, you know, do his letter resignation and stuff tonight, so. All we'll have to do right now is just excuse him from, I guess, the, at least the two meetings in October, and the meeting in, two meetings in November, unless he's back by the last one in November. So, that's where we're staying on that. Yeah, we'll take a break until seven, I guess.
Your caucus is seven?
Yeah. I guess. Unless you wanna do a quick break, and then do caucus, and then have a longer break. Take a five-minute break and then recheck.
Hey, that email, can you go back, two people? Regarding the letter about the insurance?
I'm sorry, what?
Never mind, I'll talk about it.
It's off.
It's off?